Roll call by the clerk.
Judge Deskins.
Here.
Maestra Anderson.
Here.
Maestra Johnson.
Here.
Maestra Murphy.
Here.
Maestra Robinson.
Here.
Maestra Dotson.
Here.
Maestra Varney.
Here.
Leo, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need approval over the minutes of January the 5th, 2015, and January the 12th, 2015. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Roll call, please.
Maestra Anderson.
Yes.
Maestra Johnson.
Yes.
Maestra Murphy.
Yes.
Maestra Robinson.
Yes.
Maestra Dotson.
Yes.
Maestra Varney.
Yes.
Judge Deskins.
Yes. I need a motion to approve the minutes of January the 5th. Oh, excuse me. Motion by, and so forth. Okay, public comment. Is there anyone here, Mr. Gibson, would you like to come and talk a minute?
My name's Alan Gibson. I'm the one the bridge talks about. And I got to speak with a few of them this morning about my bridge, which has got us all to pieces. I know that been all kinds of talk about this and that and everything. I think, I don't know Frank Hatcher. I wouldn't know him if I seen him, however, I think that the administration before had good intentions to try to get me a bridge. However, I didn't wind up with one, I wound up without one, because they tore my bridge out. I'm asking the magistrates, if you would, when you decide on this bridge today, get my bridge built immediately, not 60, 90 days and all this. I want it started now. I need it bad, all of us people over here, we need it bad. We're getting old. I'm old. And I'm too fat to walk. So, I'm driving through a man's yard right now. And just, you know, there's no excuse for it. And I think we've got the best magistrates, boys, by the way, that we've ever had. I mean, you, I think you guys will work together. I think you all care about each other's district as well as you do your own. So, I'm asking you, I'm appealing to you magistrates and the judge, and I'm glad to see him here, that I'm appealing to you all to get my bridge built now. And by the way, you need to check out the other bridges up on Elkhorn Creek, it's ready to fall. And these people needs, we got one concrete bridge, if they don't even have sides on it. If they drop off, they're gone in the creek. The bridge has been there since before I was born. The infrastructure of our county needs some work, and it needs it now. And I know there's grant money out there to fix this stuff. This is a deprived part of our country. And considering there's so many people out of work, I think our federal government would give us a little money to fix some of these problems that we've got here in Pike County. And, but, that's what, that's my say, boys. And I'm asking you guys, as friends, as people, we, the people, elected each and every one of you to represent us, and so whenever you speak on this bridge this morning, would you take that in consideration that you're representing me, each, all six of you boys? And the guy that's already started this bridge has already got a lot of money tied up up there. He's got his forms standing in the air, ready to pull concrete, but if he don't get the bid, he's got to go in there and tire all that back out and take his forms back down. He's already got cut steel. He said he would drop his, he dropped his, whatever you all owe him, down, and it was below the minimum bid. I don't know how the word got out on these bids, but it did. Just like his bid got into the newspaper before the bids were even let, or was even looked at. But, yeah, that's Pike County. However, I'm just asking you boys, if you would, please, do me a favor and get my bridge built. Thank you, Judge, and I love you, babe.
Judge, if I may, Alan Gibson's a good friend of mine, and he said something there, and I want to clarify, if I may. Whatever was printed in the paper was a matter of public record. The amount was 90, if my memory serves correctly, was 92,100. Is that correct, John? And that was the quote by which Evans initially started this. And that's what, 91,200, but that's what got in the paper. It wasn't his bid. Those bids were private and were opened only on Friday at 2:00. They were done on the record, as we always bid jobs. Now, these were, Alan, so you understand where he went to. Oh, there you are, I'm sorry. So you understand, there was initially two quotes. This bridge was not bid initially. York Smith made a quote, Evans Construction made a quote. The interesting thing, and I've told you this, is the quotes that both of them gave were to the penny what it was estimated by the state that this bridge would cost. Now, so both of them obviously knew that fact, and that was a matter of public record also. So, what was put in the paper was not his bid. That was, that became known on Friday at 2:00. I was present, there's a recording of that. The clerk of this court, Rose Farley, was there, and Mr. Evans, Mr. Wright, and Mr. Young, three of the people who submitted. I just wanted to clarify that, Alan, thank you.
Is there any other, excuse me, any other comment from public? Thank you. Approval for discussion, the Pike County jailer is going to make a report.
I'd like to say good morning to the fiscal court, magistrates, judge. I'm bringing my commissary report to you today for 2014. Brian Furrow, he's my finance manager at the jail. I have Jason Tackett with me today. If you guys would just look over it, basically, to be honest with you, I'm not 100% sure this was 2014, so this was actually a few days before I took office. But I'm just bringing it over for your all's approval, to look over. If you have any questions, we'll try to answer them to the best of our knowledge. As you know, the commissary can only be spent on, you know, things for the inmates that we don't actually have to provide already by Department of Corrections regulations. Anything that we have to give the inmates through the Department of Corrections standards, Judge, we're not allowed to spend that on commissary. That's where the fiscal court has to, you know, in our budget, we take care of that. Commissary is just extra, basically, for, you know. And if we use it on the inmates, or if we spend this money, maybe it might be for a van or whatever, it can only be used for inmate purposes only. It cannot be used for nothing else. You couldn't use it for, say, a vehicle, just for the jail. It has to be used for the inmates to where, you know, you're hauling inmates around and things like that.
Is there any other comments?
No.
The motion we acknowledge is received.
Need a second. Take. Roll call, please.
Maestra Anderson.
Yes.
Maestra Johnson.
Yes.
Maestra Murphy.
Yes.
Maestra Robinson.
Yes.
Maestra Dotson.
Yes.
Maestra Varney.
Yes.
Judge Deskins.
Yes.
Thank you.
Judge, I do have a question for the jailer. I had the privilege and honor, I guess, to tour the jail this past Friday, and I didn't sleep good Friday night.
[laughing]
You know, our young people and what drugs is doing to them, it tears me to pieces. And what are you doing, jailer, to try to stop that or deter that?
Maestra Varney, that's a good question. We've really had our feet on the ground since January the 5th in our jail. We're working really hard, and, you know, I feel just like all of us here in this court feels, I'm sure. My heart goes out to the ones that has the addiction, my heart goes out to the families. And, you know, we're doing all that we can. Up to this point, we've made some changes at our jail, as far as people bringing money in, putting it on books. We've got it fixed now, or we have a kiosk machine out in the lobby, where anyone that puts money on the books, they have to have a valid driver's license or a state ID. And the way that helps us, it helps us in a couple ways. Number one, it helps us for not having our employees handling cash. I really don't like that ideal, not that our employees would do anything, but it just, it leaves a window for accusation. So, we're stopping the cash flow as far as taking money at a window. That helps us that way. And then another way that helps us is if I've got drugs in the jail, and I've got someone that's selling drugs, one of our inmates is moving drugs throughout the jail, basically what it does, it helps me when I catch them, or if I get an informant that tells me that this person's moving drugs, I can go to my machine and pull the names of who's putting money on this guy's books, because that's the only way they had to pay for it. And it's already helped me out, already get one charged. So far, we've got, we've charged four inmates up to this point for drug abuse or selling drugs, moving drugs through our jail. We've got four, I've got with Rick Bartley, we're having them indicted. I've got six inmates placed in isolation for possession of contraband right now. I've got six pods that's lost their privileges for contraband being in the pod. And the reason that, you know, you don't, we can't bring a charge on a certain person in that instance is because you may find it in the pod, but, you know, there's 13 people in that pod, so you don't know who to put that charge on. So, what we do, we just take all their privileges, you know, their TV, their commissary. We do that, and believe it or not, that really hurts them. They don't like that. But, you know, another way that helps us by using that is, let's say, I've got five families that's putting money on this one guy's books. Well, that tells me, basically, who this guy is selling his stuff to. So, in order to run, you know, the jail the way that I want to run it, I need all this type of information in order to complete my investigations. When we go before the grand jury to get an indictment, you know, I need to have proof. I need to have some stuff showing, hey, this is what's happening. Because if you just walk over there and try to get someone indicted without having some proof and backup, you know, you're wasting, you're wasting the jail money, the fiscal court money, and everything. So, I want to have good cases and good proof when I go before the grand jury. We've done a lot. I would say also, I'd like to thank, you know, what time I'm up here, I would like to thank my workers. I've got some really good workers out there, just in a combined effort between Darn, the solid waste department, and Jody, with her girls. So far, in the last couple of weeks, they've picked up 803 bags of garbage throughout our county, you know, trying to clean our county up. Our inmates are out working, they're doing a good job, I'm not having a lot of issues out of that. So, everything's running smooth right now. I'm just, my main focus, and I don't care to tell the court, the TV, or whoever, my main focus right now is to try to get the drugs out of my jail, to where when someone does get arrested, has a drug problem, and they come to the jail, you know, basically we can try to get them back on track and get them back to their families in better shape than they was, you know, before, when they left. And, you know, I got to have the drugs out so I can help these people, because they're addicts. And people has to understand, you know, out here, that an addict, you know, I got a saying, I love the addict, but I hate the addiction. And an addict will do whatever they can do. They keister these syringes, the drugs, the suboxone, the cell phones, and you really have to stay on top of it. I mean, it's a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week job over at that jail. It really is. It's non-stop. We don't stop and go home at the end of the day, you know. I mean, it's a constant battle. And that's fine, that's what I like. It's a challenge, and I enjoy it, you know. And I thank the people in Pike County for allowing me the opportunity to be their jailer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would encourage anyone, Judge, to go over and take a tour of that jail, but now listen, if you ponder on it, it'll bother you. Some of these young people that are on drugs and stuff, we met a young girl over there, she looked to me like she was 14 years old. They told me she was 19, and she was in there for stealing, but the reason she was stealing, she had a drug problem. And it just tore me all to pieces, I'm telling you. You know, our young people, what is happening to our young people? But I'd encourage anyone to go over and see that. In fact, I would encourage some schools, if they're having problems with kids that are 13 and 14 years old, let them come take a tour of that jail and see what lies out there for them. It's the real world, it really is.
John Doug, would you present to the reading of the Pike County Contingency of Government Ordinances?
Judge, this is the first reading of an ordinance of the Pike County Fiscal Court. I'll do it in summary form. It's one of those routine matters that any incoming administration takes care of in the first meeting or two, and it simply provides that, and states that the Pike County Fiscal Court deems it necessary to provide for the orderly succession of office of judge executive in the event of the absence of disability of the judge executive as defined in KRS 67.725 when involving a national, state, or local emergency. It further provides for the succession judge through the deputy judge, right on down through the magistrates as set forth in the ordinance. Judge, that is the ordinance in summary form. This ordinance is not only required by law, but the state emergency management people, Doug, they're very anxious for us to get this done. This is a first reading, will not require a motion, a second. We'll have the second reading at the next court meeting after it's duly advertised.
I have a motion.
Don't, Judge, it's just a first reading, and we've done the first reading, you won't need a motion, okay?
Thank you very much. Denise Thomas of the Big Sandy Ed, please come to the podium and discuss the request.
Good morning. You have a resolution for consideration today. It is concerning a project that the University of Pikeville is proposing to construct a telecommunications training facility at their property on the South Mayo Trail. The facility would be constructed adjacent to the dormitory space that exists there. It's a training facility that will be related to the telecommunications industry and provide the maintenance and installation technical training that employees in the industry require. The project is an application to the Community Development Block Grant Program under the Economic Development category. As you know, the CDBG program, which is administered by the Department for Local Government, provides you the opportunity as a local government to apply for various categories of funding for different projects. With the Economic Development category, that application does not prevent you from applying for other funding under that program. This project is estimated to be $3,478,000, and combined with other applications, that will complete the funding package. The city of Pikeville is going to be the lead applicant on this CDBG application. CDBG allows a multi-jurisdictional application to be submitted, which allows for additional funding. In this case, up to $500,000 in funding under this particular category. I'd be happy to answer any further questions that you may have about the project.
If I may, Judge, I want you to state, Denise, for the record, that Pike County will have absolutely no liability if this court agrees to adopt this resolution.
There would be no financial, the only obligations that the county would have would be compliance with all of the regulatory policies and so forth that go along with the CDBG program.
Could you just kind of give me an idea of what you've just talked about there, all the regulatory policies? That scares me to death.
Certainly. Compliance with Civil Rights Act, equal employment opportunity, environmental regulations associated with the construction of the project, and so forth.
Thank you.
Thank you. In doing this, will it hinder us in applying for any grants under this program now?
It will not.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Maestra Anderson.
Yes.
Maestra Johnson.
Yes.
Maestra Murphy.
Yes.
Maestra Robinson.
Yes.
Maestra Dotson.
Yes.
Maestra Varney.
Yes.
Judge Deskins.
Yes.
Thank you.
I need a motion for the adoption of a resolution to support a 2014 Community Development Block Grant in the amount of $500,000 for the University of Pikeville to be used for the construction of a technical training facility. Okay, yes, we did. Thank you. Authorization to place the Pike County Solid Waste Banquet Bills on the 2015 tax tickets.
Judge, we also need to add that that is pursuant to KRS 109.310.
That's correct, Judge, and also, this is done pursuant to the Pike County Administrative Code, it's solid waste ordinances. This is the only way we have, Judge, for the information to the public, to ensure that we do collect solid waste bills, and Lord knows, we need to.
Have we done this in the past? We've done this before, right?
Every year, I think, or no, it's, yeah, every year, yeah.
Need a motion. And second. Roll call, please.
Maestra Anderson.
Yes.
Maestra Johnson.
Yes.
Maestra Murphy.
Yes.
Maestra Robinson.
Yes.
Maestra Dotson.
Yes.
Maestra Varney.
Yes.
Judge Deskins.
Yes. I need a motion for the US postage up to the sum of $12,000 for the Solid Waste Department for mailing out solid waste bills. Motion.
Motion.
Second. And roll call, please.
Maestra Anderson.
Yes.
Maestra Johnson.
Yes.
Maestra Murphy.
Yes.
Maestra Robinson.
Yes.
Maestra Dotson.
Yes.
Maestra Varney.
Yes.
Judge Deskins.
Yes. Now, we need magistrate's roadwork. I need a motion to accept magistrate's roadwork.
Motion.
Second. Roll call.
Maestra Anderson.
Yes.
Maestra Johnson.
Yes.
Maestra Murphy.
Yes.
Maestra Robinson.
Yes.
Maestra Dotson.
Yes.
Maestra Varney.
Yes.
Judge Deskins.
Yes. Maestra's comments.
Judge, I have no comments this time.
Just one, Judge. Our next meeting is scheduled for February the 3rd, and that's the evening that your conference at Lexington, the judge's conference starts that evening. I think we need to change it, say, from 5:30 that evening until 10:00 that morning on the 3rd. Everybody else agreeable?
Judge, I don't guess you've got much choice, but seeing me, like, all we're having is specials, you know. I like to see a regular meeting, sometimes people can brag up whatever they want to.
Okay, all right. Maestra Varney.
Would we change it, too?
Judge, we, I've been out watching these guys pick up garbage. Our volunteers are doing a great job, the inmates are doing a great job, but they can go back and just do it again, and again, and again, and again, and, you know, it gets bad, it really is, but we've made some headways on some things, and I want to try to mention a couple volunteers that's doing a great job, and I don't want to miss nobody, so I'll continue to do this, but Jim Blackman over in the Sidney, Kentucky area there, him and a couple of his neighbors are doing a great job of picking up this litter. And two or three things that I've been working on, I've talked to West Virginia, Mingo County, West Virginia, the commission over there, met with them about cleaning up Tug River. So, we're, you know, I'm after this litter. I'm going to get this garbage picked up. And we're using volunteer, every means that I have available to me, Bobby, I'm going to try to use, but it just, it tears me up when I'm driving over here to Pikeville and see litter on the road and stuff. I just don't understand it, you know? But things are going good over at Belfry, and got a great crew to work with over there. I tell you, our people over there were doing, I couldn't be more tickled with them. You know, Chris Harris left me in a good way, and I'll have to brag on him a little bit on that.
Thank you.
Judge, if I can interrupt your business just a moment, we discussed changing the meeting and moving that regular meeting that's set for the evening of, when is that, Leo?
February 3rd at 5:30.
February 3rd. If it's the court's desire to do that, I think, Maestra Murphy, you can make a motion, get a second. We need to have a roll call vote on changing that meeting, and that'll become a special meeting. Thank you.
Second. Roll call, please.
Maestra Anderson.
Yes.
Maestra Johnson.
Yes.
Maestra Murphy.
Yes.
Maestra Robinson.
Yes.
Maestra Dotson.
Yes.
Maestra Varney.
Since this is a special called meeting, can we do that, John Doug?
I'm sorry, I was reading something Maestra Anderson just gave me, I didn't hear your question.
Since this is a special called meeting, and that's not on the agenda, can we do that?
We can put anything right now on the agenda for that special called meeting, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Treasurers' business.
And Judge Deskins.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood you, thank you, John Doug. I'm going to make you my assistant and pay you out of my own pocket, but this is a special called meeting. I thought you were talking about can we do it for the next meeting, but under your comments, we can do that.
Okay, thank you. All right, the Treasurers' business, John Doug.
Authorize any necessary transfers and interfund transfers to pay the bills, payroll, health and life insurance.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Maestra Anderson.
Yes.
Maestra Johnson.
Yes.
Maestra Murphy.
Yes.
Maestra Robinson.
Yes.
Maestra Dotson.
Yes.
Maestra Varney.
Yes.
Judge Deskins.
Yes.
Authorize the payment of the expenditure approval list dated January 20th, 2015, and any other utility and telephone bills received before the checks are run.
Motion.
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Maestra Anderson.
Yes.
Maestra Johnson.
Yes.
Maestra Murphy.
Yes.
Maestra Robinson.
Yes.
Maestra Dotson.
Yes.
Maestra Varney.
Yes.
Judge Deskins.
Yes.
Authorize payment of an expense reimbursement for magistrate Bobby Varney to the newly-elected officials' training in December 2014 in the amount of $494.40, and this is pursuant to official registration and expenses can be reimbursed by the county after taking office pursuant to Attorney General Opinion Number 84-1-Vibe-1.
Motion. Second. Roll call.
Maestra Anderson. Maestra Johnson.
Yes.
Maestra Murphy.
Yes.
Maestra Robinson.
Yes.
Maestra Dotson.
Yes.
Maestra Varney.
Yes.
Judge Wood.
Yes.
Authorize registration for those who wish to attend the SOARs 2015 Strategy for Strategic Development.
Authorize registration for those who wish to attend the SOARs 2015 Strategy Summit February 16th, 2015, at the East Kentucky Exposition Center in Pikeville, Kentucky. The registration before February 11th is $10, and after it's $15.
Motion.
Motion.
And a second. Roll call, please.
Master Anderson.
Yes.
Master Johnson.
Yes.
Master Johnson.
Yes.
Master Murphy.
Yes.
Master Robinson.
Yes.
Master Dotson.
Yes.
Master Barney.
Yes.
Judge Teskins.
Yes.
Back on September 23rd, 2014, Court Order Number .004, we had an authorization that when NRCS money was received to pay a J&amp;M monitoring bill, but that has sort of, the paperwork has gotten lost, and we need, J&amp;M monitoring is wanting their money now, so we need to go ahead and get, go ahead and pay them the $6,000 and get reimbursed once Jeannie can get everything straightened out through NRCS.
Motion. And a second. Roll call, please.
Master Anderson.
Yes.
Master Johnson.
Yes.
Master Murphy.
Yes.
Master Robinson.
Yes.
Master Dotson.
Yes.
Master Barney.
Yes.
Judge Teskins.
At the first court meeting, I had copies of everybody's bonds except for the county court clerks who reached it to me that day, and I didn't have it on my list, but I need to acknowledge the bond through Ohio Casualty Insurance Company for the county court clerk Rhonda Taylor in the amount of $100,000.
Motion to acknowledge.
Second. Roll call.
Master Anderson.
Yes.
Master Johnson.
Yes.
Master Murphy.
Yes.
Master Robinson.
Yes.
Master Dotson.
Yes.
Master Barney.
Yes.
Judge Teskins.
I have no further business, Judge.
We need to go into executive session to discuss potential litigation. Bobby Varney, would you please read KRS?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session in compliance with KRS 61.810, Paragraph C.
Second. Roll call, please.
Master Anderson.
Yes.
Master Johnson.
Yes.
Master Murphy.
Yes.
Master Robinson.
Yes.
Master Dotson.
Yes.
Master Barney.
Yes.
Judge Teskins.
Yes. We'll be in executive session for a few minutes. Court come to order. And I
need a roll call. No? Okay. All right. John Doug, could you and Jackie, Frank, I mean, Frankie, help us out on this situation?
Judge, if I may, I would suggest that I yield to Frankie Stacey, our purchasing agent, on the awarding of bids. Is that agreeable, Judge?
Judge, I have two bids to present to the fiscal court. The first bid is bid number 36 for 2014. It's a 28-foot mobile command trailer. This is a Homeland Security grant that the Big Sandy Add has got for the East Kentucky trackers. We received one bid from Rich Specialty Trailers of Topeka, Indiana. Total bid price is $40,000, one-year limited warranty. Delivery will be on February 20th, and no exceptions to the bid. And my recommendation would be to award the bid to Rich Specialty Trailers, having the lowest evaluated bid price of $40,000.
I have a motion.
We've got a fully executed Homeland Security grant to pay. It'll be passed through money. We'll have to pay it up front, and then we'll get reimbursed on the backside. It's 100%.
Motion.
I'll make a motion.
I need to...
Roll call, please.
An amendment started for the next court meeting and have the final, so it may be in February before we can pay for it.
It won't be delivered till February anyway, so it should be okay.
Okay.
Now, roll call, please.
Master Anderson.
Yes.
Master Johnson.
Yes.
Master Murphy.
Yes.
Master Robinson.
Yes.
Master Dotson.
Yes.
Master Barney.
Yes.
Judge Teskins.
Yes.
The second bid is bid number one for 2015. It's for one new concrete bridge at Gibson Bottom Road in District 3. We've received three bids. Evans Construction of Bataville, total bid price $91,200. Larry Young of Varney, Kentucky, $79,900, and Tom Wright Construction of Pikeville, $72,500. And it would be my recommendation that we need to reject these bids at this time.
Have a motion. Roll call, please.
Master Anderson.
Just to reject the bid.
Yes.
Master Johnson.
Yes.
Master Murphy.
Yes.
Master Robinson.
Yes.
Master Dotson.
Yes.
Master Barney.
Yes.
Judge Teskins.
Yes.
That's all I have, Judge.
Judge, at this time, I want to make just a brief statement about the bids on that bridge and about where we need to go from here. We, being this administration, inherited a real mess on the Gibson Bottom Bridge. Things were done that were not done in accordance with law and regulations. When I found out about this on December 22nd and brought it to your attention even before you took office, Judge, we wanted to do the right thing. You said that over and over, and I agree. We must do the right thing. Having tried to do that, we now find ourselves in a situation where a bridge has been demolished, taken down, over Elkhorn Creek to the Gibson Bottom. This court has heard from a resident of Gibson Bottom, Alan Gibson, about his concern that there is no bridge, and about his concerns over ingress and egress, and those concerns are valid and legitimate. Mr. Gibson has reported to you, Judge, and to me, that they are going through a neighbor's yard up there by using another bridge, and that a neighbor is not going to allow that to happen for a long time. So they need a bridge, and they need it yesterday, Judge. In other words, it's a real emergency. And based on that, Judge, I would ask, request, or suggest even that this court, and you, Judge, declare that an emergency exists with regard to the construction of that Gibson Bottom Bridge.
I will declare an emergency. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Roll call, please.
Master Anderson.
No.
Master Johnson.
Yes.
Master Murphy.
Yes.
Master Robinson.
Yes.
Master Dotson.
Yes.
Master Barney.
Yes.
And Judge Teskins.
Yes.
Now, Judge, the State Procurement Code to which Pike County is subject requires bidding for any purchase or project over $20,000, as this court knows. However, there is an exception to that requirement, and that is when an emergency exists. In the opinion of this court, and I think rightfully so in my personal opinion and legal opinion, emergency now does exist with regard to the Gibson Bottom Bridge. That being so, Judge, I would suggest a motion and a second and a majority vote authorizing you to enter into a contract with a contractor who can construct that bridge in short order. Now, Judge, I want the public to understand what really confused this situation. And as I said, the mess that the court inherited, Judge, that bridge was not only demolished, but certain construction work was done by a contractor who was claiming the right to be compensated for that work. And from everything I've been able to learn, Judge, and what we can, I think, legitimately assume, that the contractor felt that it was authorized by the then-road commissioner to begin that work. Now, there has been a controversy recently which has arisen, Judge, that we've had considerable discussions about, and threats of litigation, hence our executive session, about the value of the work that contractor performed. And so we think we have a valid resolution of that, that we have reached an agreement with the contractor, Judge, as to the value of that. And I would therefore recommend that this court authorize you to enter into a contract on an emergency basis for the building of the Gibson Bottom Bridge, which would take into effect the compromise settlement that I just mentioned. Thank you, Judge.
Motion.
Judge, before you vote, I'd like to clear up a little what John Doug just said. You know, the previous court, is what you said, had made this agreement. And it wasn't the previous court, it was the previous people working for the court. And I want to clear that up. This court didn't know what was going on until everything done happened. And, you know, I just want to clear up that, to let the press know that we didn't know what was going on. But the road commissioner and the contractors had these negotiations and these talks, but it didn't come from the court.
Master doesn't...
And we inherited that problem.
You're exactly right. I'm sorry I misspoke. I didn't mean to do that. But, you know, I became aware of this on December the 22nd. Now, that's when I knew that a bridge had been demolished up the Gibson Bottom, and me and my friend, Mr. Gibson, corresponded on Facebook, and I promised him that this court would be aware of the nature of the emergency, that this court would act, and that's what this court has done. And, boy, I wish it weren't so, but I think we have now gotten in a posture where all can be treated fairly, and this is being done legally. Had it been declared an emergency back a month ago, two months ago, or whenever all this started, there wouldn't have been any question about this. It was not, and now it has been. Judge, thank you.
Judge, one more thing. And this contractor, John, that you're talking about, this court had nothing to do with telling him to go do the work. You know, it was done by our previous administration, but this court didn't hire anybody to do any work.
We're just trying to build a bridge. Have a motion, please.
Judge, I'll make a motion to give you the authority to go ahead and get this started.
Now, just a second. Roll call, please.
Master Anderson.
Before I vote, I just want to defer to what Hillman said, and that's why I'm voting no. Thank you.
Master Johnson.
Yes.
Master Murphy.
Yes.
Master Robinson.
Yes.
Master Dotson.
Yes.
Master Barney.
Yes.
Judge Teskins.
Yes. Now, the, well, we've awarded the bids and done the work. County attorney's report, John Doug.
Judge, I think I've reported out. Thank you.
Thank you, John Doug. My comment is that we've had, I inherited this problem, and we've been working on it, and the bridge is out, and those people at Gibson, the Gibson Bridge needs to be repaired and fixed. And we finally have got it done by declaring it an emergency, and it should be done in about two to three weeks. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much. And...
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. And second, and my roll call.
Master Anderson.
Yes.
Master Johnson.
Yes.
Master Murphy.
Yes.
Master Robinson.
Yes.
Master Dotson.
Yes.
Master Barney.
Yes.
Judge Teskins.